Okay, welcome to the Village of Buchanan workshop meeting, we're twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and I do want to apologize for the delay of the start of the meeting. Um, first, so this is our workshop, and I would like to ask, and I call him Stu, Scott Wharton, to um, come up and give us an update of the highway department. We were just discussing with Scott yesterday, we had a snowstorm, the first one of the season. But Scott has put a lot of hours and since what nine o'clock last night to three thirty in the morning clearing the roads?
Oh, to three thirty this afternoon.
Oh, three thirty this afternoon, yeah, thank you, everything looks good.
Thank you. Here, I don't own the chair.
Oh, okay, thanks.
If you don't have enough neighbors.
You got some share?
Yeah, we'll share, we'll share, thank you.
Um, I did want to say something, but.
You have the podium.
Um, I just wanted to thank for having me and for giving me a chance to um, be the general foreman, honestly, even I originally couldn't think I wanted it, but um, it turned out, I actually enjoy it and spend a few, I think it's been a good fit, so thanks for the opportunity. But I also just wanted to say, I feel like my position is almost like being the manager of a baseball team. I mean, no matter how good I am or how good I think I am, the guys that I work with, I mean, it's not, I'm only as good as those guys are, and I mean, those guys really showed, I think, what we can do, and they're willing, what they're willing to do, and I mean, I can tell them what to do, and if they're not willing to do it, or I mean, um, don't have the desire to do it, nothing's gonna get done, so these guys, I mean, really, I think, doing a great job. Um, it's been a side taking over, and it made my life much easier, and then I kind of thought it would be in some ways, I mean, I think we have a good group of guys down there, and I think we're um, you know, these guys, I think, weren't always given the chance to do some things, and now they're given the opportunity to do it, and they're showing that they can do it, and they want to do it, so um, and I think we're getting stuff done, you know, so um, so, I mean, I think I can get, take credit for changing some of the attitude down in the highway department, but the work is all of us down the highway, if not just me, and I can help steer them, and um, but I really do lean on them a lot, too, to get this stuff done, so um, but, you know, for us to do, we want to get more done and do more projects ourselves, and some of that, I mean, we've already started updating some equipment and tools, like we just bought a new jackhammer, like a month ago, and we already used it, like on four or five different projects, so I mean, the equipment that we're buying is being used, it's not like we just want it to look like we're doing work, we're and prior to us getting a jackhammer, we were trying to work on a catch basin in the summer, and we're breaking up the road with a pickaxe and a shovel, and, you know, it added so much extra time to our to the work, and I mean, getting just jackhammers just sped up the process, and now it's just uh, it just makes things easier, and so sometimes, so, I know it's, this isn't like a short sprint, this is like a long walk, so it's gonna take time, and we're not gonna get everything all at once, but I think getting some new equipment and doing things will make us more proficient and get things done on our, that we can do ourselves better, so. What I do, I also want to just take the guys down there, really do, are a great group of guys, and they really do help me a lot, and I've been on them, and I mean, I helped them, and they helped me, so it's, it's been pretty easy down there, I think, so. That's all I wanted to say before we got started. Oh, one thing I want to say, too, about these guys, um, for the pod, we don't have the tools down there, and they bring their own tools from home to get things done, so, I mean, they're definitely willing to put this work in, and like I said, slowly we're getting tools, but they're willing to take that extra step, get these things done, so we've actually borrowed tools from Peter also, he's helped us out, too, so.
That's good to know, Scott.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Thank you. But you put in budget, uh, budget, you've talked to Marcus about the budget, um.
Yes, I mean, like this year, we've also bought some new tools, and we're like slowly buying things, I'm not gonna buy everything at once, I mean, that's gonna be a big burden, but slowly we're getting new things. Um, some things are old, some things just we don't have anymore, I mean, so, and we just want to get some with eventually, we'd like to get a cement mixer, instead of mixing all cement by hand, like this way, then we could do like a sidewalk patch, that's like maybe a little bigger than what we can do now, because we're not just sitting there mixing cement by hands, you know, so, stuff like that. So, yes.
Well, we appreciate the job you guys are doing down there.
Thank you.
Starts with you, Scott, so.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for the list of um, of things you have here. Um, I know we took a ride last week, and, and we went around and talked about some future projects. Um, one of them was uh, to paint the highway garage.
Oh, yes.
You know, because we, we see some, some chipping there, and we had a discussion about that. Um, also possibly some handicaps parking spots up by the pool, you know, who can, if that can happen, you know, we have to, we have to look at that. And what else, we, we just drove around and looked at different things and talked about different things.
Well, yeah, I have um, I mean, I have just some, I mean, I know the generator downstairs needs to be painted, that's one thing on our list. We also have plans, all, all the stairs at the code, two of them are in very bad shape, there's three different sets of stairs at my school. Two of them are extremely bad shape, one, I mean, is we're gonna replace all of them, plan ripping all three of those sets of stairs out and redoing them ourselves, and there's two sets of stairs outside the pool. One that goes right up to the pool house, and the one that goes from the parking lot to the driveway, we plan ripping those out and replacing those ourselves. Um, like, front door at the pool house, I know they were having issues with, I mean, closing properly, we're planning on putting a new door jamb, a door in there. I'm having issues with the lawn system at the pool, I've already talked to the lawn company, and he said that you can do some updating, and maybe a few new parts, and so that, we look into doing that. Um, behind our salt shed, we have a lot of dirt and debris, I already talked to Tommy Courtman about um, you borrow their screener, and we could screen all that and separate it, so we could get some good dirt that we could use out of it, and then whatever else we get out of, maybe get rid of. Um, and I know a street sweeper has been an issue, I've also talked to Tommy Portland, and they said, as long as they're not using their street sweeper, they would let us borrow it. But I've also contacted um, a place called Three D Industrial Maintenance about sweeper rental, where they can provide a driver and a sweeper, and I'm just waiting to hear back for price on that. And there's, I'm, I'm waiting also, I know, I'm sorry, I'm getting caught now, here a little bit, but um, traffic light at U V School, um, I'm waiting, I'm supposed to meet Morbiel Electric on Thursday to talk about the traffic light there, I know that's something you guys want to get, talk about, um, input back. Uh, and also the traffic light on Broadway and Blake the Avenue, there's been one green light that's been out for a few weeks, and that's because the um, that one uh, traffic light cell is outdated, and they can't just fix it, but luckily, there's another traffic light there, so there a green light there still, but we have to look at to see what we have to do to that system in order to get that um, traffic light working again. Those are just some, I mean, and also how someone came and looked at replying the garage out here, the cement and the braces, I'm waiting for a price on that. Um, and one thing we would like to pop again in the future is an asphalt recycler, um, which is, we can use our old millings to make cop fresh plateau all year round. Um, and we have a big pile of old millings at the, that have been sitting at the sewer plant for I don't know how many years now, that are something that we could possibly use for that. So, I mean, these are just some of the things that, I mean, we have looking ahead, so.
Now, you can see you guys have been very busy working, um, you know, you've got a good team there. Definitely, and you know what, I, I liked how you um, you, you wanted to bring out your team and, and, you know, recognize them, you know, what, what a good job they're doing, but one thing I want to say to you, a, a brave leader always unleashes the power of its team, and that seems to be what you've done, Scott, brought back through, definitely, so, now things are working well there.
Well, I think it goes both ways with us down there, I mean, I think they enjoy working for me, and I enjoy working with them, so.
That's important. But yeah, everybody's doing a good job, I, I see guys out there all the time, I've seen somebody, a couple of weeks ago, there were three guys, I guess, fixing one of the catch basins on Church Street across from, you know, right by the school there, and I'm like, what are you doing in the hole there, you know, it was kind of funny, I was making fun of them, but uh, yeah, they were, they were busy working, doing their thing, and so, yeah, you could see, I mean, there's a lot of things that are getting done.
We built, we rebuilt quite a few catch basins in this list that I gave you from round up, it wasn't just putting in a few bricks. Quite a few of these, we tore completely out and rebuilt completely, so. Hopefully it'll last a long time, so.
Yeah, you could see that the road was, was settling there because that, that was collapsing, so, no, good, that's important. No, it's, you know, everything looks good here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you, tell the team, keep up the good work.
Right, thank you.
All right.
Hey, I got a question.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Scott, what do you feel like the need for mechanic is down there, with you, you got a lot of stuff going on that you need a mechanic?
I think it depends, if you want a mechanic, that it's just strictly a mechanic, it does nothing else. I don't think we could use that, but if we have mechanics that we had in the past, where they did other work, then yes, we can use that, because there are some things that we don't know, because none of us are mechanics down there, we can do some small things, smaller things, sorry, hot now, nerves, I, I'm a singer, and I could.
Yeah, I mean, we're all singing, you got that mouth, huh?
The thing is, that's all scripted, but now.
Ten years?
So that's why. But um, um, what was I saying now? Oh, um, the mechanic, if he does more than just mechanic work than we have in the past, then I think we can definitely benefit, because smaller things we can um, do on our own, but there's some things that could be small, that we don't know that they are, because we had a garbage truck break down, and a hose was leaking underneath, and we weren't sure if it was a transmission hose or hydraulic hose, and if we were sure with a hydraulic, this was the positioning of the hose was underneath to cap the truck, that's why we weren't sure what it was, and if we were sure of the hydraulic hose, we could take it off ourselves, and we wouldn't have, it would have been fine, but we weren't, since we weren't sure of the transmission hose, if we just took the transmission hose off, all the transitional fluid would just leak down all over the place. So that's why we called Pacific to come, and then they showed us what it was, and they did it for us, but we, not being mechanics, weren't sure exactly what it was, but if we had known it was hydraulic hose, we could have just did that simply ourselves, so it was just kind of, I don't know, we say bad luck, but it was just, we just didn't, weren't sure, so that's why we didn't do it ourselves, so.
Right, anybody else have any questions?
I got a little more.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
No problem.
You get, you get.
So, um, you, you say you got a jackhammer?
Yes.
And your compressors gives up to?
Yeah, we got a compressor.
So you've never had a jackhammer done before?
We did when I first started.
How, how many years ago was that?
Well, but there, when I got there in nineteen ninety, um, and then.
So you haven't had a jackhammer in how many years?
No, no, it was, it was, we had one when I started in nineteen ninety, and then, I don't know, somewhere in the last ten years, we haven't, it wasn't there anymore, but I don't know, I mean, I was driving the garbage truck, so it's on flat time things that went on in the garage, I didn't know about, so somewhere, you know, say the last ten years or so, they got rid of it, I don't know why or when.
Because you, you're rebuilding these catch basins, and being on this kind of work, I know what the difficulty is of doing this. And I mean, if you're resetting heads on these basins, what are you using to reset the heads?
Well, they're using a front end loader, um, and muscle.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, you're, you're really asking a lot of your men without the proper equipment here, so I think we should get more involved and make this uh, easier task for them, for you, for them. You know, I, I'd like to be more involved and, and proactive to getting you the right equipment to do this job, I mean, these are basic jobs, and that's saying that you haven't doing them, and you can't do them, but without the right equipment, it's impossible.
And one thing, I mean, I was actually talking to Todd Travis, because they have a small backhoe at the sewer plant, and that's been here since the eighties, and um, I was talking to Todd just like a week or so ago about what if we put in together for a new one that's a little bigger, that would benefit both departments, and this way, it's not just buying one thing for one department, one thing for another department, it'd be one thing for both departments that we could share, and so I thought that would be something we could do in the future also.
Absolutely, it's an absolutely great idea, this village should have its own backhoe, and it should have that equipment available to it for students shooting a plant and for the highway department.
Yeah.
It really, it, it's, it's mandatory, it really is.
And we don't need like a huge.
No, I know exactly what you need, and, and it would be, it would really be uh, for you to wheel that loader all over town just to pick a head up over catch basin is ridiculous. You know, but, you know, hopefully we can look into that and, and be a little more proactive in getting the right equipment.
Okay.
And Marcus can help us by going to some of the auction sites and find something.
Well, we look.
Yeah, oh, good, Scott's been looking into it, yes, good. Because there's a lot of equipment out there that's available for this situation.
I just had two quick things. Um, if we're looking to painting in Villas Garage, can we look at painting the pool building?
That's up to you guys, I mean.
I think it's time.
What's wrong with the pool building?
Yeah, don't do it.
Why not?
Because you want to take down something that was put up there by an Eagle Scout group, if you want to do a mural.
Wait, come to the mic, come to the mic, you got to come to the mic, nobody can hear you.
Oh.
Wait a minute, don't do, don't paint the pool building? Oh, who painted it?
Because I don't think you should take down something that in Eagle Scout troop, put up a couple of years to know. If you want to do a mural, you want to repaint the highway garage, that would be a great place to do. You want to put some kind of board up on the backside of the tennis court, make a beautiful mural there. But to take down something that the Eagle Scout troop voluntarily did, came to us and asked, had their plans approved by the other board, I just think that's silly, I really do, there are other places you can put a beautiful mural, on your, a lot of other places. And I love the idea of it going on the highway, quite honest, because the color is definitely, so.
It's time, well, it's starting to peel.
It's a very wrong opinion.
You say anything about mural?
No, I don't think, yeah, you're referring to a mural.
No, no, no.
No, I'm.
Painting up anytime.
I think maybe if we get some more history of this project, then, then we can look at it in the future, Mira.
My point of the matter is they should match. Like the colors in the building should match, so I'm hoping that there's some kind of uniformity, if we paint the village garage, somehow we kind of make the pool building look like it matches.
But is there, is there complaints about the pool building, because ever since it was in, I've, I've only gotten, gotten positive reviews, people liked the idea that it was an Eagle Scout.
It's a suggestion through.
Okay, no.
It's a suggestion that the two of them should match.
Okay.
It almost looks like it's the same piece of property, they should match, that's why I said.
I agree with that. I agree with that, they shouldn't match.
Look at the same color, and.
And I didn't say anything about removing the mural.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just. Okay, all right, everybody, let's, let's lower the, let's, let's lower the heat level here, it's getting hot in there, let's lower it.
It's very hot.
Let's, let's talk to one another.
I was matching the colors. Great idea, I do know now that people who, or I passed, never knew where the pool was. It catches their eye, especially since you guys have removed trees, thank you for that, too.
Yeah.
That was a suggestion.
Yeah.
You're all taking down by an Eagle Scout group, I don't.
So when it comes time to, to paint the highway garage, we'll get some type of a, a color palette, and just, just to throw that out there, the village of Buchanan colors are blue, so. You know, just, you know, we'll, we'll discuss that, you know, when the time comes.
And my other item, Scott, was did we utilize the resources of a local business, like state sweeping, we get a bid for sweeping?
Oh, no, I didn't think about state sweeping, I can, I can get a.
You know, there's a track record there, he does other work.
Okay, I, what I, I, the company I contacted, I got from, recommender from the town of Portland, that's some of that was why I contacted them. I mean, I could, I could.
Yes. Good idea.
That's it, that's all I have, thanks, Scott, all right.
Well, Scott, I just want to thank you for your, it seems like you really made a positive change in the short term. Thank you, thank you for recognizing, everything looks great.
Thank you.
Good job.
I was gonna say that.
But I didn't. Thank you.
Scott, thanks for everything, right?
Thank you.
Scott, you won't mind if I come down here and we go over a few things, will you?
No.
I'd love to come down and meet you one day, go over a few things with the equipment and, and, you know, stuff like that, and, you know, some of the processes that I learned in my career, that maybe you could benefit off of.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, I, I would like to do that.
Sounds good.
Can I make you the highway liar or something?
Yeah, sure, love to do it.
Thanks, good, all right, that's why I wanted to put you up front, I figured you're a little, little tired, but thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, so the next thing is discussion of the AMS project, David, Marcus?
Uh, David provided the board with a sample, a draft resolution, some information that Dave is going to discuss the resolution that you might would consider at the next meeting, and also what the process, how the process might move forward with AMS, so, Dave?
So, uh, do you think? So, in advance of um, your March seventh meeting, I think we prepare a resolution for your consideration. If you recall, back in January, we circulated the notice and practice engagement which is a requirement under the State Environment Protection Act procedures. Um, that was circulated to the series of interested involved agencies. Uh, in the memo that I submitted to you before, I included a few responses back, one from the county, uh, the other from uh, New York State G A team, um, they, they both provided some comments, but neither of them would definitely be the village board act ones in the agency. So procedurally, the next step would be for your board at your March meeting, if you so desire, to declare yourself a B lead agency and coordinate environmental review on behalf, how they have to this application. So as, as one of the um, the parts of the process, the applicant is going to prepare um, a supplemental submission, which could include the environmental, the full environmental assessment form, and it would include a series of additional pieces of information, and, and part of the memo that I've provided to you includes a kind of an explanation of all that different material, uh, so that as part of your hard look under seeker, uh, these are some of the documents, and I'll just summarize survey um, plans depicting the environmental conditions, that steep slopes and wetlands, um, evaluating zoning and insistent on these conditions. Um, they should be providing some conceptual plans, so that you have an understanding of how the project fits into um, in the, into the context of its environment, with respect to, we talked about this with the outfit, impacts the slopes, impacts, potentially impacts the wetlands, um, uh, traffic and circulation, um, uh, visual simulations, uh, how does this particular project meet the goals and objectives of the village's comprehensive plan and the design guidelines, so these are very important aspects. In the, as part of the special permit, there is a requirement for municipal cost benefit analysis, so they need to provide some documentation as to what the physical impacts are, how, what kind of passes will be generated, um, whether there's some of the impacts on, particularly to school districts and perhaps the municipal services. And then the other component to that is because you're introducing potentially a hundred and forty eight new households, each household brings with it some measure of discretionary income that they would spend within kind of the greater Buchanan community, so I think it's important that the village understand that, that there's this kind of spin off effect of kind of a positive environment, a positive economic impact within the local community. And then, just finishing up quickly, stormwater management, which is important, uh, impacts on utilities, and then last is traffic and transportation, including pedestrian circulation. As I mentioned, New York State usually take a very close look at the potential impacts, because this property runs on uh, on nine A, but also in your uh, design guidelines, there's specific reference to the pedestrian orientation of development of the most events into older age, just within how you make those connections. And again, how do you enhance um, connections, because you have all these new households, you have some discretionary income, it may be easier for them to walk back and forth between different parts of the village, particularly, and we have uh, commercial um, public here in and around uh, George Hall. So again, I think these are all parts of the um, the application that you can expect from the applicant um, after you've declared yourself the B agency, uh, that's not. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, we'll be following the village board as a lead agent, will be acting as a planning board, correct?
Uh, so, the, that's a good question, so the, the issue is, as you recall, um, the village board, uh, as, as the zoning text amendment was written, would retain site plan approval for uh, an application, but, but just for an application like this, where it's a C one, C two, overleg, and they're requesting for this additional density. Now, with that, let me go first with this, I'm sorry, so just with that, though, there is a, a review uh, and recommendation referral to the planning board. So the planning board would play a role in reviewing the, the site plan and providing your board, the village board with their uh, uh, expertise with respect to site plan review, so that complements um, the review that you're doing as part of site plan.
Uh, was the applicant's contention that the planning board was going to act in an advisory role only, as their understanding, and I believe their testimony was that the planning board will be a non-binding review, I believe our, our matrix states that they have to agree with the findings of the applicant, do you recall that?
I don't know what, I don't know what findings you're referring to.
That the planning board with, the planning board decision will be binding on the village board, so it's, you also believe that it's an advisory capacity?
That's correct.
Okay, so, then since the village board is acting for site plan approval, we would have to follow the same process and procedure that every applicant before the planning board would follow, correct? Okay, so we will have to schedule an extra meeting per month for AMS to come and give. Their information similar to what the planning board does. All of the planning board meeting for site plan approval is public. And tho- those meetings will be public as well. So I'm, I'm sure you received on the email that I responded to about, uh, developmental. Meaning that the village had with the applicant that was not in public. And that I was thought that it should be in private, it should be in public and not in private. Where the applicant and village representatives met to discuss the planning process, which is outside of the norm. Of the village can't claim or site plan. I'm, I'm not familiar with any of that. Is anybody on the board familiar with my response to the email received regarding the AMS plan?
I'm not familiar with the email, but I'm not familiar with the meeting that you're talking about either.
Are you talking, I think, if I may? I think Sean's talking about the AMS, the Thursday afternoons at one o'clock. Uh, with the consultants.
So it's a consultant meeting.
Right.
Yeah, and traditionally where you set up. Because the planning board approved the site plan, all of that information from inception is discussed with the approval authority, which would be. The village board now. So those types of meetings, you don't agree with that, Marcus?
Okay, so when you had consultants getting together, you, all those meetings with the consultants. The consultant will be at a pub, at a public.
The engineer and the planning consultant would review the plan ten days beforehand. They would write up their comments. They would present the comments to the applicant and the approval authority at the public meeting. The, the approval authority would discuss those and come up with a way to meet the goals. Of the applicant and the village. They were never held and in, in private. They were always held in public. And one of the things that we tried to expedite was that. The our village consultants would notify the applicant prior to the meeting. That generally does not happen. And when we saw that there is issues with communication, we would facilitate that. But the responses, the reviews, everything was done in public, at a public meeting and put on the record. So that everybody knows the progress and everything is out in the open. That's the way we have always done. We absolutely did.
I think there's a discrepancy between what Sean's talking about and what you're talking about. So these meetings, in my opinion, I've been to a few of them, are coordinating. When do we expect the planning, you know, or the traffic guys, are they in yet? And when do we expect them to have a report to give to the board? At that point, it would be discussed, obviously, in public. There's nothing going on in those meetings where like two planners are making decisions or looking at each other's plans or anything like that. And when we go back to the only other project I was involved in, which was the, um, the Balter project. Um, it happened all the time where like the two planners would get a hold of each other. Hey, what are you submitting? When are you submitting it? You know, I've got an idea, you've got an idea. And by the time they got to the planning board. There was a, a, you know, a comprehensive planning memo or George's memo. But that was generally discussed for, for just for coordination. When are we going to get ready? What are the time limits? What are we looking to do?
And, and once a month, these memos and communications would be reviewed by the planning board. To ensure the progress of the, that everybody was in line with the goals of the approval authority work.
Correct, but we don't have any reports. Nothing goes on on those meetings. Nobody's, nobody's doing reports or something.
So what's going to transpire when we become lead agent next month? That's when that should start. That's where all these communications back and forth, all the reviews of plans, the site plan.
Oh, yeah.
That, yeah, that's.
Well, not the site plan until you change the zoning text. When you make the zone text amendments, at that point, you'll be able to be the planning board.
So what I'm saying is these housekeeping issues have to be established so that everybody understands the role of responsibility. So we're going to have to set a schedule for a monthly meeting of the planning board, of the village board, similar to what you do for the planning board. And everybody's going to have to come in and review all the comments that the engineers have, game to site plan, all of that.
Yes. It's got to be at somebody's request. I mean, it doesn't have to be a planned meeting. If there's nothing, no information ready for, to be put out there, then why would we have a meeting? It's got to be, uh, at the request of the planner, us, Stephanie and the applicant. I mean, it doesn't have to be a planned meeting every month.
There, there's no way that a project is not. Because the applicant had said he wanted this for expert, to expedite the process, there's no way that nothing is going to happen at thirty day period. Absolutely not. But there is a possibility.
But there is a possibility. If the applicant requests a meeting. And we feel that the, the, the meeting is valuable to what the project is, then yeah, we'll have to put a meeting together for them, but I don't think there's going to be every month.
Well, the only way to review the engineer's comments, the player's comments, the applicant's comments, the attorney's comment will be to have a public meeting.
Absolutely.
In order to move the project, putting the comments that the engineer would supply to the applicant would have to be given to the approval story at the same time.
Yes, yes, that's correct. And are we doing anything that's out of the public eye now that we should, we should expose?
I interpreted that other meeting as a planning meeting.
I certainly know better than that.
I, when I sent that email, I didn't get a response from anybody for a couple of days. I'm blocked out of emails, so I don't know what transpired the last seven days.
You got my response, yes. The day after, that afternoon, probably. Well, I'm sorry, because what I explained to you was that's kind of, that was kind of coordination. What are the expectations? What meetings are we going to need? You know, we're not going to schedule a public hearing if you don't have. The information and we don't have the information, but we're not exchanging anything like that on a telephone call ever, or a Zoom meeting ever.
And they would be coordinated to get the information to provide to the village board to review. So when I have it anywhere near that process step. Stephanie, you are a part of all of these meetings, right?
No, but when I can, I am.
Okay. And how many meetings has there been?
I think I, I've participated in maybe three.
And I know.
And they're, they're probably ten minutes.
Dan was there, Steve was there, and we all had the opportunity to get on these meetings, correct?
That's correct.
I never had an opportunity to get in here. And if you had more than three people to discuss the project, it has to be a, a public meeting.
I mean, I've seen you on those emails where these got, he responded, Teresa responded, Dan responded. I didn't respond because they already had the two seats filled. So that was, I mean, I've seen him, I've seen the emails, and you were on the email. I didn't respond, you didn't respond because they were already filled, I was assuming.
And, and these are the, like I said, these are the coordination of meetings in regards to just discuss what the process and moving forward. Try to work around the village's schedule in regards to how, when we get the documentation together by the consultants. To provide to the board to review. So there's been no substantive, substantive. No, but there's no plans to submit, to submit yet. There's nothing to submit yet. We're just having background discussions about regards. To meet the timeline of the village board to get those reports ready. So we're nowhere near that yet.
So you're talking about consultants talking to consultants.
Correct, the planner, the traffic engineer, all talking to each other to try to coordinate everything. But there's not.
Those are the kind of things that were public.
Yeah, but there's no reports. There's nothing to provide to the board to review yet. When it, when there is, they'll be provided to the village board and documents to review.
It's easier to make a decision when you're involved at the inception than anything reported.
But there's no decision to be made yet.
Well, I don't think they're going to make a decision without us involved anymore.
That's correct, that's correct. Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, so, um, at the March meeting, um. I provided you with kind of a list of all the, uh, reports and the kind of technical pieces of these. Application that should come in here to review. But I think also at that time, in reviewing this, this list, if you think that there's something missing, or if you. Um, want another piece of information, you think there's something important that the applicant should also be providing. That would be a good time to let them know that, um, in addition to, with this provided here, they may want to have something. And there's an, an additional opportunity for input as far as as possibly for a formal application.
And as the conceptual plan that was submitted by AMS to the county. Uh, they have the same comments as they had with the other project. So has the village drafted a resolution to explain to the county why we're not going to accept some of their requests?
No, because it's necessary.
But absolutely is. We have to tell the county why we're not going to do it.
No.
No, no?
No.
We could say thank you for your comment.
Well, tell us how you understand it. So we're not doing something wrong here because I'm.
Well, if Stephanie agrees, that's fine.
Well, yeah, I mean.
The way I understood the county's role in this. As an advisory, uh, position, we generally would have to have a, a resolution or a document. To supply to them as to a rationale for not following their, their plan. Now, if you're saying we don't have to do that, we don't have to do it, that's fine. That's just the way I had interpreted the advisory role. Of the county, that's why we submitted for that, because if they had no power and no responsibility, we wouldn't waste the time.
Did they make recommendations on, on?
But I don't even think we're at the point of responding to the county because I'm not sure what we are going and what we're not, we're, we're at the beginning of it, you know, they're saying. That's correct.
Be the first thing. And that's the same that they put for the other project. I believe the, the same thing. It's a mirrors it because it's similar in the same location with the same criteria. So we don't have to respond to them at all?
That is correct. And let me, let me, let me just, uh, emphasize that, uh, as part of the, you had a, um. Matter with the accessory, uh, volumes with the county that commented. And I believe under general municipal law, the response is that all you need to provide is a resolution back to the county. Now, at the end of this process. You will have a resolution. Uh, when, with, with, yeah, at the end, with a determination of significance. Uh, that can be provided to, uh, the county. So that's my understanding is that. The county, all the county, to me, general municipal law, you just need a resolution.
So as my original comment was, do we have a draft resolution to respond to the county's comment?
No, because you have to finish the process.
So we do need something.
Yes. Finish the process.
Okay.
So we're not doing something wrong yet.
We're not going to do anything wrong at all. We're going to follow exactly what we need to.
All right, got it.
Are we good with AMS? And, and we've been discussing this, but you know, just review AMS is the. The building on nine A behind the hardware store. So I'm sorry, sometimes we get talking about things and, you know. Just to bring everybody up to speed which project that was, that's all.
Yes, and then just on the, the resolution is for you, uh, for consideration for next week. Um, there is a, uh, I just want to make a correction that. The last where as clause, uh, at the bottom of the page. In the process, that this particular action, because it's a building of more than forty feet. And the bill classifies that as a type one action. So in the, in that whereas clause, um, it references an unlisted act. Okay, I just want, and I can. But that was just one thing that I saw as I, uh, had, had been going through.
Okay, so we are done with the AMS. Um, does anyone have their hand raised, Tom?
Because we're doing.
I'm sorry, I did have one more thing. Uh, as you know, I had mentioned last month, and if the board would like to consider changing the. Uh, acreage in the table of bulk regulation from five to four point four, so that the other development that's up the street. This is, within a hundred yards. They'll be afforded the same opportunities for development, this developer is being afforded. Has any one of the board members considered that?
Are they willing to do the same application? As AMS?
They've already, they've already submitted a site plan.
Well, I mean, the AMS for the, the zone text amendment, they'd have to apply the same, same procedure.
All we, no, all we would have to do is change the zoning text to say any property. Instead of saying five acres, it's a four point four acres. And then they would be afforded the same opportunity. It would be up to the applicant whether he wants to change his plans. He's already farther down the road in his. Planning phase than AMS is. I, as I had said last, uh. Last week or last month. The person who's building across the street from the church had been the one that approached the village board to create the overlay district. To create the population density. And we worked with him for a couple of years and we came up with a good compromise. And I felt it was a good compromise because it still included a commercial. And he's been trying for three or four years now. Or at least two years to come up with a project that fit that criteria. Now. The AMS project comes along and we changed the whole thing. And I didn't think it was fair for somebody who came to the village. To try to develop a piece of property, to try to increase the population density. To, to try to add to the tax base. I didn't think it was fair that he wouldn't be included in something that was actually his inception. So whether he wants it or not, that's up to him. I would just like him to be afforded the same opportunity. And I had asked you guys, uh, at the last meeting whether you thought it'd be worthwhile, because it, it's the same process. All you're doing is changing five acres to four acres or four and a half acres. You guys.
Well, if he requested it, I mean, within, you know, I, obviously, we, we, we would investigate it.
And just to put on, to put on the record, um, Mr. Carbone, this in an email late this afternoon.
Four fifteen.
Four fifteen, requesting the village board to consider it. The difference is, um, he had the opportunity to ask for zoning, zoning text amendment, he never did. Uh, you're, you're actually responding to an application from AMS. The, Mr. Cabo never applied for, for that change. But you're right, if, if the village board wanted to take that opportunity to allow that to happen as a board decision, absolutely. Dave might have an, Dave might have an idea to address some of that as well. So Dave, why don't you talk a little bit about it for the boards to understand that. It might not be as simple as that, but maybe you could.
I think part of, and again, um, in the memo that I prepared, one of the. The items for consideration is zoning and existing land use conditions. So with respect to this particular issue, um. The AMS application has submitted a formal petition for, uh, the zoning and they have specific criteria. I would think, um, one of the, the aspects that, and this is a question I think that came up. Maybe Justin Murray had raised earlier, we won't, uh, counsel. That how many other properties are affected by the current petition? In other words, more than five acres. And this is once. So I think as your initial investigation, one of the comments you may want to raise to. Or as part of the request information is, all right, so we have this one application, but. Based on the criteria that's currently submitted, how many other properties are affected by acres or more? Than the C one C two. And then a follow up to that would be, uh, I think it's just. All right, so if you change the criteria from five acres to less than that, whether it's four point five or four acres, whatever that is maybe. Then how many properties would be affected by that? And I think that's something you would want to understand. Before you, um, modify the, the application or the petition as it currently stands. Um, if, as an example, you drop it to, you know, four and a half with four acres. And all of a sudden that affects twelve properties, and then that has to go into your decision made without how you apply the zoning. Um, once it's approved. So I think that's a legitimate, a question to raise with the, uh, with AMS as part of the. Their subsequent submission of information to, for, uh, evaluating the proposal.
Well, I did do a cursory inspection to Westchester County G I S. There would appear that this legislation as currently written would only affect the AMS property. It also appears that it's only for C one, C two overlay, not M one or M two. So. I also looked at it for between four and, uh, over four acres. And it appeared that the only other property at four point four acres that are available in the C one, C two. Overletting would be the one caused from the church. I could be wrong. I only did a cursory review, like I said, for Westchester County G I S through the tax map, uh. Tax, you know, there's the tax lot mass, those are the only ones that appear. So I would just like.
The playing field. Who's trying to increase the tax rate. So I, I think that's, you know, another suggestion, let's have the, the applicant, the AMS applicant. Uh, do the same exercise and see what they come up with.
Why should we have to wait? Why can't we just go out and look at it on our phone?
If that's, that's, if that's what you'd like to do, then my suggestion would be to prepare a formal report. Well, if that's, if that's, if that's what you'd like to do, then my suggestion would be prepare a formal report. With the properties in question and all of those that you've booked at, uh, and then submit that to, uh, the board for review. That, that would be. So that they procedurally how you would evaluate that at least.
Well, the other procedure we can go by is change the tax amendment, and we have the consultants who are reviewing the original tax amendment. To also review it at four point four acre. If it's done with five acre, it's only four point four acre. You know, we're, we're, we're not talking about a lot of property here, a lot of documents. We're not, you know, we're not talking about the whole town. We're talking about one point two square mile, mile, and I believe the C one, C two only includes forty properties. If I'm not mistaken, they're all listed in the code. By by owner's name.
The, uh, the other component to that is if you understand that the. Uh, the AMS applicant is re-zoning a portion of the M one, which is adjacent to C two, so there could be other properties that are. That have another zoning destination that could be merged with an adjacent property with the C one or C two. Uh, which could expand that potential to the problems.
And the only other adjoining C one, C two overlay in the M one district is down by the Iron Brick. Which we'd never change. And that would have to be a separate application to change that zone. So I was, I just was asking the board members if they feel that all of the property owners should be afforded the same opportunity. That's all I'm asking.
And I believe.
Not overburden some process to go from the start up.
I believe you're right. I believe it should be an equal playing field, an even playing field, and and I, if we do an investigation and it turns out that that's the way it should be. I mean, are we, do we have the ability to change it?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then, then let's investigate it and change it. I have no problem with it. I really don't. If they're going to add to the tax base, then I'm fine with it. I really am, and and. That looks like a good development, and if we can help them in the process, I I think I'm I'm more than, I'm, I'm ready to do it.
What do you think then?
I'm fine with it. Dave, yeah, I have no problem, uh, with it whatsoever. I'd like to get possibly an opinion letter from David just to make sure all the properties are covered fully. We have ourselves. You know, a proper list, but other than that, I'm a hundred percent for it.
I just have a question though. So just like AMS. Applied for the the text amendment, right? Now, would Carbone have to do the same? Why not? Is he just piggyback off of that?
Yeah, well, president, from a, from a timing standpoint, you would have an active application, active petition from AMS for zoning. Uh, the zoning needs to be put in place first before, and and. Whether it's five acres or four and a half or four, whatever that is maybe, zoning needs to be in place first. Now, if Mr. Carbone is waiting for the zoning to change, then he's got to wait until his own is in place.
Okay.
Uh, if he wanted to submit his own petition for. Four and a half with four acres as a, as a minimum threshold, he could do that, uh, if he so want. He's, he's as a property owner, uh, he's afforded that right to submit a petition, just like AMS submitted a petition to me.
And he'd have to have these consultants and everything, uh, to approve. Uh, to get behind him in in a way or.
He would have to have the same level of, uh, detail, uh, that's being requested by AMS here as part of that application.
See, current, currently what we're, the process is going to happen is there, AMS is going to come to us and discuss the zoning text amendment. We're really going to agree to the zoning text, we might add, subtract, whatever. Then it goes to a public hearing. Then the public hearing will stay open for probably at least two months. Minimum is thirty days, thirty days notification. Then you have the public hearing, then another thirty days or so to vote on. All you have to do is say instead of five acres, we do four point four acres. So maybe I'm oversimplifying.
No.
Yeah, so.
You're oversimplifying, so you want to put point, you take off point five, four and a half acres.
That's right.
On this, on this amendment.
That's right.
The current amendment that they applied for.
That's right. So, yeah, so if you're, if changing the acreage is a substantive change to the petition. Which means we have to start over, and we notice the petition.
Correct.
So, that's why I think it's important that we have the information before you. Relative to, um. The parcels involved before you start making revisions to your amendments to an active petition before you.
But we haven't noticed the public hearing yet. So the text amendment would have to be in place before a public hearing is set. We have enough sort of public hearings, we could change that text. Before we set the date for a public hearing, and you'd have to renotice, you have to start the process over again, because it's a substantive change to the zone.
And it's an AMS petition. Are we, are we not mindful of this?
That's what I'm saying. Can he have to have his own application?
I mean, no, 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 I think, I think, I think he doesn't really. If he wants to sit and wait, and you guys decide four and a half acres or four acres, right? And 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 the text, and you go through your hearings, and you change your code that says four and a half, then then Mr. Carbone, if he wants to, can submit, and now it's. It would be, he doesn't have, he doesn't have to ask for the zone tax amendment because it's done.
It's done, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But to ask, in my opinion, to ask AMS to we, to change their petition on behalf of another person who didn't submit a petition and start all over is. Not, not the way.
For notifying the.
And the other.
We've sent it everywhere. Yeah, that's the problem.
Yes. Yeah, it will have to be notified again.
Could benefit from it if if we, if we, like David said, if we have. If if some of your questions back to to the, um, to the applicant is, you know, okay, so tell us how many five acre properties, what about four and a half acre properties, how many? Because that's, that's your right to say. You know, we're changing this, what's the potential development here? And is it, is it too much? Is it too, whatever? Um, and that all goes on, that's fine. And then you do the zone text amendment, and Mr. Carbone says, hey, great, you know, it's four acres, and I, now I can ask for what there is before.
So the fairness, the fairness of it at that point is reversed, because now it's unfair to AMS. Because now they have.
Yeah, to ask them to redo this is not, no.
No, it's. Because anybody who has five acres or more can develop based on AMS's project, so using that same rationale, anybody in that zone with meets that criteria. Can benefit from his application also.
Once it's, once it's, right, but you're saying change the the verbiage of the petition that they submitted. We, we, when we sent it to the county and to all the interested agencies, it said, the DOT, it said five acres, right? You're now saying you can't just cross it out, you renotice it. And that kind of holds up AMS, and they'll say.
He would have to start his own process just like AMS.
Yeah, or wait for this process to go, and when you were, if you change the zone, then he's as a right, he'll come in and he'll, there isn't need an amendment.
And before the, the public hearing is set, then it works out, the acreage can be changed.
But I think what David was suggesting is that I think it's fair, I agree with you, that it's fair to ask AMS, because you're asking for additional information. You know, tell us how many properties are five acres, what about four, what about four and a half? Because you want to know the potential development, right? And so they can at least look at that and give you some information on it. But I think to change the petition is, is unfair. Just my thoughts.
Anyway, are there any hands raised on?
Uh, anybody who's an attendee, do you want to raise your hand? Uh, the mayor would like to allow you to speak if you'd like to or comment. So just raise your hand if you'd like to speak. No hands raised, ma'am.
Any other questions for Dave?
Yeah, all those people.
I can't see.
Nice, there you can see it.
Alright, so now the comments on this, so we're moving on to the next topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this is something we do every year. Uh, we have an intermunicipal agreement with the town. Uh, we, uh. We do a shared use agreement and also bidding. Um, for the town purchasing director, so that's, you know, that will be on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Okay, discussion of senior director. That's going to be an exact, but I just want to tell you, we have found, or they have found a senior director, um, there is someone that has agreed to that. So we'll have an executive session, we will discuss that.
A director or consultant?
Consultant.
It's consultant, yes. Uh huh, thank you, yeah. Uh, Pedler's permit for plug PV. Marcus?
Uh, Cindy received the application, you have, you have it in your package. See if there's any questions, concerns, you want to grant it, you want to change it. So there's opportunity for you, for the board to discuss it.
That would be indeed. And there are total of providing, right?
Yes.
This is them?
Yes.
Not sure if those hours lined up the same as what you just recently included a couple of months ago.
I don't think so, this is crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I think you reduce the hours in the evening, yeah.
I think we should give them the same hours that we approved for the other.
I agree.
So we just, just.
Okay, change the hour.
Like five or six o'clock.
Especially the winter months.
What, 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 what copy other one? Solos.
It states renewable energy.
Sustainable energy solutions.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all in agreement that's just, you know, same, same requirements we had with the other vendor, Tedler. Discussion on ice rink. Nancy, Miss Nancy, our recreation supervisor?
First. Want to apologize again, I didn't even jump down the throat. I just heard, and I'm like. Why would you pay over to me? That was my thought, sorry.
It's okay, I'll accept it, thank you.
Okay, so I've heard. Through Marcus, if you guys want to get rid of the ice skating rink. That's what I've heard.
The only thing I asked was for a record of attendance to see how many people from the village benefited from that resource.
Right.
And whether the amount of money spent on a maintenance. And, uh, for the operation is worth a lot.
Right.
You know, we've had a very mild winter, and without having ice skating rink in there, it could have been open for kids to play in that, you know, so, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's what my comment.
Okay. Alright, so. As far as ice skating rink is concerned, I honestly think we should get at least another year or two, okay? Tana Corlin has theirs. They have about the same attendance, okay? I go down there all the time, I come to John Colliato. Sometimes they get zero, sometimes they get three, five, eleven, okay? So it's very wishy-washy, it's very new as well. And yeah, there hasn't been any warm, actually, winter. Um, as far as a couple of thoughts of mine to keep it going. Um, my husband and I. And Sharon. She posts on Village Facebook, but we've posted on other group sites on our personal, on Facebook, and just. And we promote it. Every single day it's open. It's like, this is when we're open. Come down and skate, get your skate on, etc., etc., trying to make a fun, trying to get people down there. Cheryl also, Bill one, shares a lot of my posts that I do. Um. One trustee came down this year. Anthony, he came down. So.
Are you skating?
Well, I have a lot of kids. I like that.
Keep them busy.
You know, um. So I just really honestly think it needs to be a little bit more promoted. I would like, I think there's a few lost opportunities. We opened it on Halloween weekend, which is when we had our Halloween parade, that went very well. It was a no to when I had the, my Christmas tree lighting, and no to the March. I mean, at the St. Patrick's Day parade, which personally I think would have been an excellent way to say. Come on back, bring your skates, we'll stay open X amount of hours, don't have to do it during the parade time, that's fine. But that was shut down too, but I think those are lost opportunities. Um. To run the program, it's a hundred and thirty-four dollars each day that we're open. That's for two attendants. I'm pretty insistent about having two attendants for safety issues. My husband was down there a couple weeks ago when he was working, and there were some guys that came in and played basketball. It was the only time that it happened. But if there had only been one person down there, I don't know how comfortable the other people would have been. You know, either A, saying, um, eight o'clock, I got to close up. You know, I got to kick you out, or what? I would have definitely talked to her, or listen down there, giving care of that, that we had no issues with them playing basketball. Um, could always back it down to one person, but that's. Safety issue with me for a phone call. Um, nothing has changed since we opened it. Um, the cost, where the money was coming from, anything like that. We did open it up to non-residents, charging five dollars, and we've got a few bucks from that, not much, I know that. Um, there are ideas. Moving forward, you know, Cindy and I were talking about the other day, and I did not pursue them this year. But I would be willing to pursue them. Uh, a movie and a skate. You know, we have a screen, I have tons of movies. Okay, uh, for kids and everything like that. Um, host a village night. Down there, let them come and skate. I think it's getting a little late for that, for March is here, and we did say we were going through March. Um, because the rentals of the prevailing start in April. Um, that's my opinion. You guys have any? Comments or whatever, that's fine, you can think about it, you can vote on it, but I really think you need to give it a year or two. More. Being processed for the state, it costs us to put it together for manpower. Yeah.
Well, my kids have fun down there.
It's fine, I understand that.
But it needs, it needs to be. It needs to be, um.
Promoted more.
Promoted in a, uh, you know, not that you're not doing your best, I'm just saying is that it needs to grow more and.
I agree.
You know, people don't even notice there.
I did put out the flyer to all the elementary schools in the beginning, with the dates and times that were open.
And something like this needs to get traction. It really does, doesn't happen overnight.
Yeah, it does, I agree with you, and Tana Corlin, this is doing the same thing, they even rent the skates, I mean, yes, that might be a little bit of a benefit, but I don't know how much you know that. So I'd like to keep it open for at least another year if not more, and just see how we can plug it and make this thing roll.
So what's the board's thought of keeping it open? Let's, let's do time pieces. What's the board's thought of keeping it open to March? That's.
Through March, that's what we got to read. Through March, yeah. I just, I'm not doing it on.
Some conversation about closing it sooner, that's, that's why I'm asking.
No.
Yeah, okay.
We, I think we had a discussion.
Yes. Alright, so, you know, we'll, we'll revisit, we'll revisit it again.
Right, because I know in the beginning it was like, oh no, now I got to do an ice skating rink. But, you know, for those who have come, they really, really love it. And we have people who walk in and check it out, you know, couples usually come in and check it out. Whether they come back or not, you know. I have no idea.
Any big kids that go, like my age?
Everyone, no, no. We do get parents that skate with their kids, though.
Oh, nice, that's nice.
Couple of teenagers that come in.
Well, there's not one of that.
That's why I am. I'd like, I pay to see that.
No way.
Okay, so, alright, so we're going to keep it up to the end of March, and then we'll, we'll revisit it again.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in. Okay, this is something we do when there's use of alcohol, uh, it comes for board approval. I do see that the, um, this is something we always do. There's a liability insurance here. So. We're good.
Yep.
You know, that'll just, we'll just move on with that.
Yep.
Um, discussion of fund balance, Marcus?
Uh, yeah, I brought this up some time ago, um, trustee Murray reminded me about it, so I finished up a draft. I passed it by our financial advisors, also with Moody's and Standard and Poor's. Uh, they like the draft as it is, I brought it to the board to discuss any comments. Uh, it just puts it in a position of more financial stability. Uh, also, with Moody's Standard and Poor's, it keeps our bond rating, if we need to do it, they like to see that. Um, so please digest it, I'll be happy to answer any questions now or at a future meeting, and you know, is that a pleasure to the board if you want to. You know, adopt it at a future meeting, so just take a look at it, have any questions?
What's our bond rating right now?
I think it's, uh, double A one, but I can get you the exact rating.
Double eight, yeah.
Yeah. But I'll get you the exact one, I want to make sure.
I thought we were a little lower than that, we had a problem something one time.
Well, this is the first time we had bond rating, as far as I know, we had, you had an unlisted bond rating for the, uh, the bond that you did many years ago. I actually went out to a bond reading this year, we got an official one, but I get you the exact rating.
I thought we had an unlisted bond rate for the, uh, home state, and that was lower than that.
Yeah, yeah, before we.
Was our unlisted bond rate?
I don't know, I got to get you the original bond rate. I'll get you both. I'll email it there then. But please take a look at it, email me questions for me, let's discuss it, um, it'll be nice to have something in place in the next. Two or three months, if that's okay with everybody.
Want to put this on the workshop for next month?
Yeah, and then, yeah, exactly, and then we get. Yeah, and then, yeah, exactly. And then we get to address the questions here and go from there. Yep, perfect.
Um, the next is a motion we're going to approve the volunteer firefighters that have met the required fifty points. I think everyone got the email with the, uh, the people who have achieved that for the service award program.
And may I attached it in the revised agenda. It's in your agenda now, so you can have it as well. And all the calls, if anybody's interested in looking at the call volume, that's in the finance, um, and Sharon and. And Cindy's office, you can take a look at the call volume and you can see what they're.
Something we do every year.
Yep, absolutely, yes.
Um, also, the, we're scheduling a public hearing on April fifth, uh, for the budget hearing. So that's the day after, um, the organizational meeting. So that'll be Wednesday.
On the budget, do we have a order yet?
No, um, the orders are finalized and still finalized in the draft. He was actually away at a seminar, so as soon as I get out forward, I'll vote with you guys.
So have you had an exit meeting at all or?
No, no, not yet.
Makes it kind of hard to schedule a, a budget hearing without a order.
Well, the budget hearing is based on what, what the tax rate is going to be for next year. Um, we, I, I predicting we'll, we'll have a fund balance and that fund balance. Can be discussed in regards to how, as part of the fund balance policy, any fund balance above that's fifteen percent could be used for capital projects and then you can discuss that as part of the budget process. So we'll have it for it. What you'll have it before your public hearing on the budget. You'll have it before that. We've had it much later in the past and send it once, much later. Yeah.
And I've always asked, we had the discussion, but there's things that happen. I always like to get it by the end of the year so that when it comes, the budget time rolls around, we have that. But will we have that? That we can schedule that before, just before the meeting, the budget hearing? Do you think they'll be able to come in?
Yeah, um, he's not available for, I asked him, he's not available for the March twenty-eighth workshop, but he will be available for, for the pub, for the public hearing. On April fifth.
Okay, so can we have him?
First.
Do that first. Okay. Thank you.
For the present, for the presentation, but you'll have the report before that.
Yes.
Yes.
And then we have a public hearing on April fourth for the approval, the IMA for the, uh, town sewer agreement that has. The, uh, negotiations have come to a conclusion. So we will be, um. April fourth, yeah.
Would be the innovation.
Oh.
April fifth.
The fifth, I'm sorry. I got the wrong, it's the fifth for the budget. Usually.
It's a fit for the public hearing for that too.
The organizational meeting, so.
It should be April fifth. It should be April fifth.
Budget hearing anyhow, so it's all part of.
Yes, then it should be April fifth.
Meeting that one.
And they generally have April fourth.
There's a meeting anyhow.
But she was told that because I know that written down too.
You said it came to a conclusion. What was the conclusion?
We, um, what we had discussed before, I mean, we could discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sure you go back. Um, but we're going to the same meeting. Are you gonna, do you want to have that as a meeting? So do you have a official meeting to call for the public hearing? For the May meeting? Well, it's going to skate. When do you want the public hearing? You want on the fourth when the realization meet, on the realization or do you want on the fifth?
The next day.
So is the fifth.
Wednesday, we're going to have the budget hearing. We're going to have, um. Public hearing on the IMA, the public hearing on the I M.
Fifth. On the fifth. We had the fourth here, so we gotta change.
I made the mistake.
Yeah, because I had the fourth.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, I'll just make sure we have it right. Okay.
And then we're also going to have the presentation of our audit.
Correct.
So. So the Tuesday meeting, organizational meeting is usually not a big meeting, but we usually don't schedule business on that evening. So the next night we have, so we have two meetings that week. I'm sorry, and Sean, I'm sorry if you, whatever we went into the negotiation with, it was all agreed upon. It was a pretty easy, easy negotiation that day.
So we had discussed on the executive session prior to the seventeenth. That's been agreed upon with the town.
Yeah.
Okay, with three and capital.
That's all. No problem. Because the last I heard, we were discussing who was going to go and whether we were going to take an engineer attorney and two trustees. That was the last I heard on. So February eighteen.
Stephanie was there, uh, their town attorney was there. She was with me. I was there.
When was the meeting they played?
Last Friday. At eleven AM. On the second floor.
Okay.
No, and just to clarify.
There wasn't email sent.
October fifteenth, there wasn't. That's already, we need to have a bar out of the airplane and wearing it evening. You know, there's nothing about that meeting.
No, it was on the twenty-fourth.
Well, that was.
Okay, go ahead. No, but there was an email. You know, but if your, if your emails not working.
Well, because it changed, you require a password.
Security, yeah.
Password.
It's interesting now too.
See, I haven't locked on yet.
I'm coming out.
I'm getting it.
Download the app.
Yeah. Those instructions say here. Yes, yeah.
I had to reset mine.
But I got the car only one.
Yeah.
So it's working.
Yeah.
Okay.
I figured. Just tell me anything.
Okay, so. But that's. Um, what else do we have? But we have, I guess we have a pretty busy board meeting next Tuesday night.
Wow, it looks that way.
All right. Uh, Stephanie, anything for us? You'd like to share with us? Marcus, anything you'd like to share?
Uh, just one, one little quick thing. We actually discussed the last meeting. We got into boiler. Um, and Anthony, based on your thing, that's why they reached out a oil burner person. Scott is away, but Scott, we reached out. We actually got. One gentleman from, um, uh, from Yorktown, if anybody else you know. His, his thing is that. He said the, the problem with oil burner of that, and that I'm talking about why he told me, he said, you can't get an oil burner that big to match the New York State efficiency requirements. He said you have to get, if you want to go with oil, you have to get two, two oil burners. Um, he said his estimate again would be for the oil burner. Would be sixty thousand dollars. Now again, this is without any specification or anything and then, and then a, um. Gas would be fifty-five thousand, so they're about the same, same price. But. Um, the problem is I still got to do a scope of work with that. It's over thirty-five thousand dollars. I'll go, what the bid was me to get a scope of work. My problem is we're still in a point where we need someone to get, create a scope of work to do it. Um, then we come back again to the same engineer we had before. And his proposal was six thousand dollars to do a scope of work with. Now we can include oil if we wanted to as well. So we could go with the high efficiency. The conventional and oil if we wanted to and they have to have a proposal of all three and then try to get a new scope of work and go without. Uh, I sent this gentleman, the actual original bid spec, well, he does gas as well, to see if we come back. Many of the comments says, listen, you gave me sixty thousand. And the last guy who was the lowest bidder, but the last one was two hundred thousand, gave me a six thousand dollar price originally as well. Can you take a look at it, see what the problems might be? That might increase the cost. I haven't heard back from him yet. Um, but still, if we were below thirty thousand dollars, I guess they're fine. We can do something, but it's over thirty-five. We have to go off the bid. So we still have to do a scope of work and we're still up to that point of like hiring that same engineer to do it. I mean, the good news is, I know he's asking for six thousand dollars to do it. His total cost to do everything will come up to eighteen thousand. The next lower bid that came in from another engineer was thirty-five thousand. So we still have to cost what it would be even with the change order. So. I'm hoping the board might allow me to hire this guy to get a scope of work to actually get it out. But include oil, oil because the suggestion as well and see what kind of prices we get back. So.
So any of the previous bidders that you reached out to, the ones gave you gas, did you reach out to the same ones to?
Yes.
Stuck on the oil?
Correct, correct. And they, again, they're all saying, whoa, I could do it for fifty, sixty, I could do it for eighty, but everybody's giving me different. Information.
I mean, you eliminate a lot of work by going oil again. I mean, if you tell them you got to put in twin burners.
Right.
I mean, the efficiency is going to be off, but you're eliminating a lot of the, the initial hit.
Right.
Long term though, you may, you know, we have to look at that.
Right.
We're gonna lose on that.
Correct. So that's why I was, if the board is okay, again, if I can get the gentleman Edison to get the scope, get it out, include oil. And then we'll come back with more prices and hopefully you get a better price, either oil or gas with a, with a conventional gas boiler.
Yeah, because the oil burners now are a lot more efficient than they were.
Twenty years, yeah, especially that one we have downstairs right now.
Yeah, twenty years.
Exactly. So something, unless, and like, and like I said, I'm opening, this is one person we found, you know, if you guys know any local guys, they can do this. I reached out to some local guys. Again, Sharon has some contacts. And they said, and they, uh, the people who I talked to said, that's too big. That's a commercial. We do home, we do home oil. We don't do a commercial size is big. So we try to reach out some local guys.
We, we are going to have to hire this engineer to perform the scope of work.
Right, so.
I, I, I know it's, we're gonna do it anyway. So, I mean. So we're gonna have to think about that.
Okay, so if it's okay, we'll put on the agenda for more discussion next week. If you guys, okay, we can change, agree to the change order, but they also include the oil as part of the proposal as well.
Because when you go out for the RFP, you know, request for proposals, you, you need to apples to apples.
Correct. Everybody has a bid on the same thing.
So.
It's something really weird. We have to.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, the, the bid number was so high.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
If it was the, uh, if it was in the thirty thousand dollar range, you could tell, oh, you'll give me a price, give me a pricing for that, but not when they come to a formal bid. All right, I appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
So, Chris Marcus, Sean, what do you have for us tonight?
I have two things. How do you, uh, fire a farmer's tractor?
Have we gotten all the, the paperwork that was required?
I got a, I got another financial reports. I spoke to the bookkeeper. She's going to create a spreadsheet to give me an analysis of year to year changes. Um, this is a busy season. She said after April fifteenth. You're gonna come back and do a spreadsheet for us to provide to the board so you can see if it's financial reports from here, from this year, from that year. They've given me all the driver's license information, all important, important to the lens program, the state program. Everybody has passed that. Um. I want to see what else. They gave you guys the percentage of inside versus the outside firefighters. They gave us that information as well. Um, can't remember what else they, they've, they've been giving me information. I've been following it to you guys as well. The financial one is the most important one. I think the spreadsheet is going to help us to see what, what we stand financially with the fire department and I'll provide that to you as well. Was there anything else on this?
Um, their attorney is supposedly going to submit for a waiver from the state. Because they're out of, they're out of village. Uh, I think the percentage is fifty-seven percent out for. Whatever the rest of is in. Um, so I spoke to him once and he was looking into it and he will get back to me. I think, yeah, I probably shouldn't say that. So. I think you'll get it. I think they'll get it if, if he, if he submits for it because he needs volunteers.
So we're on, we're on track. With being applied to the whole terms and conditions of the contract. On track.
Yes. Yeah. I think we're closer now than we've ever been, to be honest with you.
I was wondering, uh. What's going on with the national code? Where are books? I know we pay thousands of dollars and.
It's on hold.
It's over two years.
It's still on hold.
We just abandoned it?
No, I, I hate that. You know what? We got so busy with something between the IMA and AMS, you know, we've been, we've been really busy and I think. That the IMA is settled, uh, the, the AMS thing is in motion.
The pilot is not for another two years.
The pilot's not another two years. Yeah, we, we were, so I, I would still like to see that done and I think what I'm gonna have to do is, is for different board members to assign. You know, and I, I know you had done, I think it was like the first hundred pages.
For January.
For January. Yeah, so you know, I, I wanna, I still want. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know, I know.
I don't remember what I wrote. But is there a drop dead date? You know, they're not gonna keep, so this company that we paid was six, eight thousand dollars. They're gonna keep this. Contract open for how many years?
As long as you, as long as, they've never given me a drop dead date. They, they provided a draft document for you, for the board to review. And when they work it, when anything comes back.
Definitely, they leave something open to perpetuity.
Uh, all right.
I spoke to them at the NICOM meeting and they, they were like, you know, when you're ready to go again, you know, we'll, you know, we'll work with you. So.
Uh, I know last month we authorized, or we said we were gonna approve the bid for the realtor, um, property on all the people close Lakeview Avenue. I still haven't seen that advertised.
I'll, I'll check what, I'll check what the, I'll check with your real estate agent.
It's not listed on any of the, uh, real estate sites. There are no signs up. There's no nothing. We paid for it. We might as well get some advertising out of it.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the one that's merging?
Yes.
Have we dealt with that?
Uh, it doesn't matter. That's what they're gonna have.
I was wondering, I know this is something that's last year, two years ago too, but what about the building logo though?
You're right. You were supposed to.
It came to a wonderful contest in probably college now, but.
That's okay.
I, I, no, I think, nobody, no, I think you guys closed it off months and months ago. Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't change.
You thank it to everybody. Nick, Nick, I don't think he's still there.
There's no prize.
There was no prize of nothing.
I know we didn't, we didn't win. I thought we had decided on one, but no, it's not.
No, yeah.
Tradition.
I like some.
Also, we're gonna have a tour of, uh, the Big Rock plant.
They're having some issues at this point.
Really?
Just a few. Um, I, I did send the email to the board with an update and, um, I'm more than happy to, to try to set up. I'm not sure what they're going to be doing. Um. But they have some issues to deal with the D and C. Um, they are going to be putting two Butler buildings up. I, I heard the other day, um, what did I tell you, Marcus? I mean, they're big.
Yes.
I was gonna say.
So.
I'm worried about that twelve years, ten years ago.
Yeah, but I guess.
But it won't, but they, when it doesn't have the dressing to violations from the D and C.
No, that's, they're two separate things. I'm just saying on our part, the village's part, um, I want to do, I do all, also want to recognize Peter, um, we, you know, but just to review. There were complaints that came in, some were planned, um. And Peter, uh, contacted the D and C, the Western Health, uh, Health Department. And the D E C did their investigation, found out, hey, it's gypsum. And, uh, so now they'll address, they'll have to address how to clean it. And yes, Peter.
Just a question, the, the New York State issued a violation on that property. If, I'm gonna ask for air mitigation, we cannot wait for any, any form of property until it's resolved, correct? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Understand, I don't believe so.
It's a violation, violation.
If the building committee is issued to remediate.
Remediate, right. Different.
Is that what?
No, no, it's not.
Just for storage.
And they came in and discussed that.
They're gonna, they're gonna start, they can discuss.
For remediation.
No.
No.
They can discuss it. They can bring an application in, but the planning board can entertain it. Well, the planning board can't even hear it.
That's why.
I, I, I was under the impression it was for mediation.
No.
No.
Nope.
Yeah, they just said for storage of some of their equipment, some totes and one building and, and then.
I denied them in the gentleman's office.
Okay.
Very coincidental. They come in now.
Yeah.
That's what I thought it was.
If the buildings aren't. To remediate the issues.
Right.
Well, how do they intend to?
Right.
Very good point, Dan.
And is there any movement on the L W R P?
I have not heard any.
There's been an update for, the, the town takes a leader on that. Um, I haven't heard anything in regards to any future meetings or public hearing, I think at this point.
Because we were gonna use the L W R P. To help us apply for grants. Uh, or work on.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Are we gonna be on hold for those applications until the L W R P is approved? And has the village board, are we planning on voting on our draft? Because each municipality has to vote. On the revisions to the draft before the L W R P is approved.
Uh, Nick Zachary is on the line as well as the liaison. As far as, we haven't met in a couple, in a number of months, so there's no update. On the L W R P as of today.
Well, the village should still approve its second on the count of.
Uh, yeah, but the, they're, the consultant will prepare a resolution for you guys to discuss the consultants. I'm not going that far yet.
Now, let's see if we can get an update of where we are.
Sure. All right, Nick, what, Nick has his hand up?
Yeah, she's still chuckling.
Okay, Nick, you can unmute yourself.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Can you hear, you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, we're kind of stuck waiting for the state. The, um. The town public hearings and the village public hearings can't be held until the state completes their review. And when we hit that point. Several months ago, I think. You know, the, the planner was saying that it could take a year to a year and a half before the state responds. So it's like in limbo until we hear back from the state. Uh, that's the last I remember. I haven't.
Yeah, that's right.
Had any updates in, in several months. That's it.
I just wanted to make sure if we weren't holding something up or if they were gonna force us to do something in a short timeframe.
No, we're waiting on the state. That's it. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Yep, thanks.
There's just one more comment I wanna make about the AMS. I know Stephanie had said that you didn't think it was fair for an applicant to have to do a little extra work. You have to realize, the applicant is asking us to change a lot. The applicant is asking us to accept his analysis of what kind of credibility you can. And I don't think it's a big stretch or a terrific imposition. For him to include a small portion that would even make it more of a benefit for village residents. Cause I remember, this, when he came and gave his presentation, he said it would be a huge tax benefit to the resident. He said that there would not be an impact to the school district, who said that commercial would be a waste. Now, for him, to just expand his scope and analysis to allow another project. To be as beneficial to the village as his, I think is not an illegal law. There are many communities around us in Westchester and New York State that ask a lot more of their applicants. They ask them to pave roads, they ask them to do infrastructure repair, they ask them to put a playground, which are far more expensive. Than increasing the scope of a study for a half of an acre. So, you know, in all fairness, everybody should be afforded the same opportunity, and for somebody. To deny some small request without even being asked, I know he didn't deny anything, I didn't say that. But for people to believe that he would be being treated unfairly by asking him to do a little bit more work. For the benefits of the community for which he will benefit greatly, uh, I think it is wrong, he should, we should ask that of him, and we shouldn't even make a requirement of it. That's just my thought.
I, I think there's a misunderstanding, because I think what we were saying before is, we will, as part of your. Review of everything David listed for you, as part of that review, you will ask him. To look at the properties that are four acres or four and a half acres along with this box, so they will review that and bring it back to you, right? And if you then, yes, we're gonna ask him to do that.
Alright.
We don't want him to have to repetition, put in his petition for, and then you as a board. Can amend that based on what your view of that, so we are gonna ask them to please not only look at five acres or above, look at four and a half and four. Which isn't a big deal.
No, I don't think it's a big deal at all.
No, that's not what I meant, sorry.
Yeah, I, I, that's the way I took it, I, it was a little of my impression, we weren't even gonna ask him because he felt it wasn't gonna be fair.
No, no, we weren't, we didn't wanna ask him to amend his petition or re-circulate.
He just has to include the analysis, so we can do the text amendment to the going. And have that documented prior to the public hearing where we adopt the text amendment.
That's what we, so we're on the same page.
Well, I, I'm on that, the rest of the board members.
And we are gonna do that. You know, I, I'd like to say something to you, we're, none of us here, I'll speak for everyone, is looking to be unfair to anyone. You know, so I, I just, I, I just wanna put that out there. By us doing the overlay district, it was, our intention was to promote, uh, development. That, you know, we need to do. Um, so, you know, that, so it did, it, it, it really disturbed the interest in development here in the village, you know, these properties. Properties were vacant for many years, and now, now we see some movement on them. So, going ahead, it should be interesting, but no, we, we've always tried to treat everyone fairly, so, but, you know, thank you for bringing that up. Steve, what do you have for us?
Well, just along those lines, you know, the, the developer came in looking to invest in our community, and I know after recently watching, um. Most recent planning board meeting, I, I understand some of the members, including the chairman, had, you know. Continued to express concerns over the fact that the village board is looking to take down the role on this, and. If this is gonna help expedite in some way, this, this process, and this process of the applicant, then I certainly see. The reason why we're, we're going ahead and doing that, and I certainly would do that again if another large project, uh, came in. We certainly look forward to working with the planning board, receiving the recommendation, and, uh, going forward from there. But I understand there's still concerns from the planning board members, and I hope to alleviate those. Uh, just the last thing too, this Saturday is the St. Patrick's Day parade, two o'clock, so if everybody's there, Matt Glassell is in Grandma.
And Steve and I attended the, uh, their party that they have at the firehouse, and, uh, you know, it was a nice. They always have a nice, uh, the St. Patrick's, uh, parade committee always has a nice party, corn, beef and cabbage, and all that good stuff. Dan, what do you have for us?
No, I would just have to second, uh, second, uh, these, uh, points, um. I, I've taken all of the same ones as Steve, so I just might. Gonna read that, um, my other question was, I noticed Lenz Coe did take down the fence around the ballpark. Um, not sure, I know it was discussed at one point, but why do you mean? The one section up along the first baseline, or third baseline, I thought we were just gonna eliminate the entire fencing.
I think, and I have to go over there to look, honestly, I think there was an issue with the drop off. Over there, I think that was mentioned one time, but I'd like to go over there and, and look at that.
It's like a barrier from your property, and that's why, uh, that's pretty much what it is.
Um, that was it.
Okay, and at, at Lenz Coe, I, I was over there, I didn't go over by the fence, but I don't know if anyone realizes. Our views from Lenz Coe are getting cut off, has anybody been over there to see?
What do you mean?
The, um, the boat.
The big boat?
Well, not only the big boat, but they have, it, it just went out, covers our whole view. Um, their marina there, just covers, just covers our whole view of the Hudson River. Yeah, it's in peak scale, but, uh, you know, I, I thought when you're supposed to do stuff with your next, by your neighbors, you're supposed to notice them at least. Yeah, I guess they did, because, yeah, so that, that ended our view of, uh, so everyone knows that ends our view of the Hudson River.
That park a lot is pretty loud.
Yeah, we got a price, uh, we got a price, cause we're looking to get a grant there, and at the time, and this is a couple of years ago. The, the price, I wanna say was about eight hundred and fifty thousand to do that park in the river. Yeah, well, cause it's gotta be remediated.
One other thing, just before, uh, any, any other news on clear panel?
Uh, yeah, I think I sent everybody an email some time ago, they actually provided escrow, um, they're gonna have a meeting with the engineer. I forgot what date it was, and I sent everybody an email on that as well.
Yeah, I saw that, but no, no, nothing more allowed, nothing.
No, they wanna go over the engineer, we go, no, the, the whole thing is, they go, they have a preliminary discussion with engineer, talk about, to talk about what. What, where the line might come in, and then after they speak, while George will provide the board with an update.
Okay.
Guess who's next?
Oh, thank you. So I'm excited about Saturday, our, our parade, I can't wait for it, it looks like the weather may be good or may not, but it'll be warm enough. Um, that looks like a good thing, and then I wanted to just thank Beth and her committee for putting that together, because it seems like. The dinner was a success, I'm sorry I couldn't make it. Um, and that's it, and the other thing is, is I, I want to just touch on what Steve said about the planning board, I'm excited about working with them. Um, I watched the board meeting the other night, I know they have questions, and, um, from what I understand, one of them was chuckling about us being the lead agency. I hope that he is okay with us being prepared and educated. I mean, I myself have looked at site plans for probably twenty plus years. Uh, and I hope that they are educated enough to ask me the questions as well as them for me. On this, on the site plan approvals and, and discussions on what we want, how we want it, and when we want it. So I'm interested and excited to work with them, I, I can't wait to hear the ideas, I think this project's gonna go very fast and smoothly. And, uh, hopefully we can work together well, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for all the boards to get together and do this, cause it's what we all need and want. And that's it.
Thank you, yeah, I, I think we'll, we'll all work well together, and we'll all put our input in, and. Get this, uh, get this resolved. Um, I have a few things, uh, number one, there is a county grant. I'm not sure if we're going to fit within the parameters of it. Um, it's questionable still, it's, uh, for two hundred and fifty thousand, it's for downtown, this is like a pilot program that the county is doing. For, uh, for municipalities. So hopefully we can fit in the parameters, if so, our downtown is the circle. So, uh, we'll look to see if we can get that two hundred and fifty thousand, and I believe the application has to be in by March thirty first. Um, the next meeting, I'm gonna be sending the board some information about, uh, the ADU legislation with the state. Uh, the W one M O A has come out, and they, they just finished it today with a proposal. I like the board's input on it, um, if they agree with it, or if we would like to send, um, our own letter. To the governor, uh, with any comments. Um, I am on the subcommittee of the Housing Committee, uh, for the Westchester Municipal Officials Association. But I, and I put my hat on there as the president of the W one M, W one M O A. So, but different municipalities are choosing to send their own letter to the governor. So I'm gonna send out the letter that came, came from W M O A. And, um, I think everyone saw, uh, Senator Harkam's legislation. So, um, uh, my biggest disagreement with this, it should not be within the confines of the budget. And that's, we're being pressured, we've asked, take it out of the budget, because the budget has to be approved. In the next, by the end of what, April first, so, th- this is, guys, this is just, it's a whole mess. Um, the other thing is, someone handed me today the Daily News, I don't know who's, who gets the Daily News. But on the front page, the Sunday paper was the new menace for the bravest. Um, unions looking to protect firefighters from toxins as e-bike battery fires soar. Search, so, it's a, it's a very interesting article, but basically what they're saying. From the, the e-bikes, from the lithium batteries, you know, um, they're looking at nine eleven type of, uh, pollution. That, you know, could potentially harm the firefighters, plus getting on their equipment, uh, all over their gear and things. And the gear has to be cleaned properly, and because of the toxins, so. That's why it might not be a good idea to have an, uh, a, a battery storage here in our community. I'm just saying, so, I just thought that was an interesting article. Uh, March fifteen, um, there is a, uh, a meeting, I don't know if everybody signed up to go to that. For the planning board and zoning board information, I think it would be a good review for the board to go and, uh, go to that meeting. It was, um, what is it?
Well, West of the Community College.
That's the credit course.
Correct.
All people, zoning board members need four credit hours to keep their qualification.
But I think it would be a good review for the board, I mean, you know, it's an hour on planning, an hour in zoning, so.
Well, when you go to a meeting, they break it up, so.
Okay, um, I, I spoke to Sean, um, I'll announce more next week, uh, March twenty nine. If, uh, the Vietnam veterans, we are having a ceremony here on March twenty ninth at noon. I'll give you more information next week. And I think, I think that is all I have for this evening. Um, anyone in the audience, anybody have any comments?
We got a hand rose, Eileen.
Oh, that's right, Eileen's not here.
Okay, Eileen, you can speak.
Good evening, um, Teresa, I have a question, uh, do you know what, uh, Senator Harkam and. Dana, I'm not sure what her last name is, uh, who took over for Sandy Galiff, what they're proposing, um, up in Albany for. The water situation from Holtech.
Oh, for the whole tech, no. Uh, with the, uh, the, the water into the, uh.
They're passing what, they can put any water in the Hudson River. He's passing a bill.
Yes, that's, yeah, and the EPA, you know, and. Yeah, at the last meeting, I just, uh, you know what? Ever, it, it's like just people not asking questions. At the last meeting, I said, you know, I, I need to understand something here, so for sixty years, this is since nineteen sixty-two, over six. This has been happening, the water has been released, the water is treated, and then the water goes into the Hudson. And it's not two million gallons that are released all at once, and so everybody's on this bandwagon, but I just. I just wanna know the truth, I wanna hear the other side, I wanna hear, how is it processed, what really goes in there, what? I, I just, I, I just can't believe the, the nuclear boogeyman has come out again. And I just, if that's the case, that's the case, but I really, you know, I can't listen to these meetings. With the anti-nuclear people saying, no, we're gonna die, we're gonna die, well, where's the other side? I need to, I need to understand so I can make an educated decision.
Well, the reason why I say that, where I'm asking that, Teresa, is because, uh, they were warning Poughkeepsie residents. About their drinking water, cause they get it from the Hudson, and it, because of the, um, because they let the water out, it disperses. So, whatever the case might be, but I happened to see that Harkam and, uh, Dana had proposed something, so that's why I'm asking if you knew anything.
And tritium is a natural occurring, naturally occurring in our environment already, so it's gonna be kinda hard to completely take that out. But what really concerns me is what their alternative thoughts are.
Well, that's what I, yeah, that, yeah, that's what I'm questioning is.
That is not the option that's going to be a positive thing for the village if you can, and, um, you know. I'll, I'll just review it again, the big water, the big water holders, I don't know what you call them. Yeah.
I was on that meeting, that four hour meeting, I listened to all that stuff.
Enjoyable, wasn't it?
Yes, it was, okay, thank you, Danny, um, Dan. Uh, are, will you be in contact with the new interim superintendent since Joe is on leave?
Sure.
Okay. He went on leave today. No, on the twenty seventh.
Right.
So I don't know how long that leave is, but, um, you know, just so that we know.
Because that was just announced on, well, I got, I got the news on Saturday.
Right. Yes, I got it on Friday or whatever, um, Anthony. I just, I just, I just want you to know that, um, at our planning board meeting. What I think we're going to do is do our due diligence and be as thorough as possible. As if it were our project, and then send it to you guys. So, we will do our, our due diligence in the site plan.
And I hope that we, we do the same for you, and we work together and get this done the right way. Cause I'm not saying we know what to do, as much as you know what to do, but I think all of us together can really get it done right.
Well, we went over, you know, just to give you, for instance, we went over the Carbone project. And each one of the planning board members that were there came up with a different question. So, it was very interesting, nobody came up the same question, we all had different concerns for that project. So I'm hoping that that will be the same for the AMS, and that, um, we can give you some insight. And five heads, ten heads, we'll have a lot of brain power going.
No, it's, it's good, it's good, the more recommendations, the better.
Okay, thank you, good night.
Alright, thanks, Eileen, okay, does anyone else have anything?
Well, just one question, you guys are talking about the water, and she has a question about the legislation. Isn't there a tour coming up soon for elected officials over there, they could be asking the same question to the family leadership? Is there a tour coming up anytime soon?
Not that I know of.
And, and Holtech?
Yeah.
I am the liaison. Would you like a tour, Sean?
He works every day.
So schedules, and I was just questioning what's on some agenda.
Uh, okay, no, I, I have no knowledge, just, I am the liaison. But thank you. Yeah, why not, right?
I would like to take a tour too.
Yeah, I asked you if you, when you were.
Oh, I'm not ever available.
Okay, I tried, I tried as tour, when you're available then.
Well, I, I'm gonna have to quit my job, but I, I mean, I think, I think, when we have an opportunity, I really would like to be involved in that.
I think you'd be, it's interesting.
Well, I'd like to know what I'm dealing with.
Yes, absolutely, and also the she brought plant too.
That I would really like to know what's going on over there.
Well.
Been there before, though, that I've been in.
Okay, what else do we have, um, Marcus, is it just personnel, do you have nothing else?
Yes, personnel.
Uh, so, uh, if there are nothing else, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, Peter, do you have your answers? I'm sorry, okay, you're fine for me, okay, I'd like to make a motion, go into executive session, can I have a second? All in favor? Thank you all for coming.